Order the meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen for Tuesday, November the 18th. I have a few changes to the agenda, just two changes. If you will add to your consent agenda at 2B8, a resignation in the Fire Department. You've got a memo on your desk regarding that. And at 2B6, you will see it says, "Request permission to promote three full-time officers in the Oxford Police Department." It will actually just be two, so you will change that to two. And those are the only two changes still. Okay, all right. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The quick mayor's report, we have made it through three home games in a row twice and without any major incidents. And so, thank you to all of the city departments that are so dag-dum tired right now they can't see straight. But our landscape crews, building maintenance crews, police department, fire department, environmental services, everybody that stepped up to make that go smoothly, we thank you and hope that you're getting some rest. And we hope that we get a playoff game. I've been asked several times in the past week, what would the financial impact be if we got a home game? If you average the economic impact of every one of the, of last football season, it would average out to about $50 million per weekend. The highest was the Georgia game, which was our largest attendance last year and is still bigger than any crowd we've had this year. We don't have the Florida numbers yet, and I suspect that's going to be higher, but we won't get those numbers until tomorrow. But Georgia game last year was $71.7 million economic impact. So people are saying, "Won't this be the largest and the biggest economic impact?" You know, there are just a lot of factors. I mean, depends on who our opponent is. Is it a team that their crowds travel? What time of day is the game? It's the weekend before Christmas. So if your game is at 2:30, a lot of people aren't trying to go on a vacation the weekend before Christmas. And so, if it's a 2:30 game, we're going to have people that drive in and leave, and we won't have as many hotel room stays. That will affect the economic impact. If it's a 6:00 PM game, you know, we'll get, we'll get a lot of overnight guests. If it's an 11:00 AM game, we'll get a lot of overnight guests on Friday night. So, anyway, remains to be seen. But I'll tell you that September was our first month where we had three home games in a row. We had LSU, Arkansas, and Tulane in September. We just got our tax revenue numbers, and we set a new record in sales tax, food and beverage tax, and hotel motel tax. So, great news, and it'll be interesting to see what November looks like when that comes in in January. Arbor Day will be held this Friday at 10:00 AM at Lamar Park, if anyone would like to join. And Holly Jolly Holidays kicks off next week, kicks off on November the 24th, and it will be open the 24th through the 28th, since that's a holiday week from noon until 9:00 PM. So y'all come join us. With that, I will move to our next item, which is to look at our consent agenda.
Motion to approve, consent agenda is amended.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Permission to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November the 4th.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Request permission to approve the accounts for all city departments.
So moved.
That's it. All in favor? Any opposed? I'll ask Braxton to tell us to come up to discuss approving of our calendar year 2026 health insurance rate.
Okay, uh, when we were exploring our self-insurance options back in September, we learned that we were expecting a huge increase in our premiums this year. We had Morgan White Group and also Don Brooks kind of bid out everything we had to see what we could do. Blue Cross is going to go up 25% this year, which is lower than the first number we got was around 50%. And we had two life insurance plans that both skyrocketed. We chose different companies to save a little money there, but nothing substantial. But I've attached on that spreadsheet on your board pack, all the listings.
Sorry, with this new flip book, it takes 10 minutes to get to the page.
All other things stay the same.
All right, does anybody have any questions? For Braxton? If not, then we won't-
I'm looking at the spreadsheet, but bottom line, what does that mean to employees?
It's going up around, employee only obviously is paid for by the city.
Right.
Employee family is going up roughly $100 a month, the 25%. Some families, some employees really feel it.
Any other questions? Not, then I'll need a motion to approve the 2026 healthcare insurance rate.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Braxton. Second reading and public hearing of a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 38, Fire Protection and Prevention, Article 3, Fireworks and Pyrotechnic Compositions. Chief?
Oh, yes ma'am. The only change that we made is in the first paragraph there. Oxford Fire Department shall approve, deny, or modify, we added the deny and modify, the use of new and emerging technologies related to fireworks for the potential use within the city limits of Oxford. And we have not heard anything from the public network.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that's here to speak on this item? Seeing none, would the board like to vote tonight on that item?
Immediately approved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Second reading and public hearing of a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 18, Animals and Fowls, to remove Sections 18 through 72 through 1874 and 1875B through 1875D, and to amend Sections 1875A, 1877, to remove dog license requirements. Kelly?
Yes ma'am, we're just trying to take out the, um, the dog licensing part out of the ordinance we have now. We found other ways and better ways of tracking, so we would like to remove this part moving forward.
All right, again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? All right, has anyone received any input on this item? I have not, our office does not.
Have not.
All right, would the board wish to vote tonight?
Immediately approved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Request permission to approve a resolution recognizing and implementing the updated definition of hotel for purposes of special levy tax collections on short-term rentals and third-party facilitators as provided in Mississippi Senate Bill 2805. Kenny is not here.
I was at their board meeting, I'll speak to this. It's basically, it's basically just applying the hotel regulations to short-term rentals, Airbnb, VRBOs, et cetera, that they have to collect the hotel motel tax. So it's just, it's a state law, and we're just putting a resolution out there saying that any short-term rentals need to collect their hotel motel tax.
Okay, um, you have a copy of the resolution? Are there any questions or suggestions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, presentation of the fourth quarter report from the Oxford Park Commission for FY 24-25. Come on up.
Hope y'all are well. I'm going to highlight a few things, and then we can get as in-depth if y'all have questions. Uh, as, as we're talking about quarter four, which is July to September, uh, which involves the last month of day camp, we had about 110 to 130 children in day camp each day. Um, you know, and what we did this year, according to last year, we let kids and families sign up their kids by week as opposed to by month, um, hopefully to give a little bit of that burden back to the parents where they can go on vacation, not worry about paying, uh, to be with us. Uh, this summer, once we had our, um, our lady retire who was over summer day camp in June, new person in July, uh, we implemented, some of y'all's teachers understand this a little more, we kind of did centers in the classroom, so now we were able to switch, kind of switch classes and, and we're able to, instead of having 160 kids of chaos in one space, we were able to separate them out and have, and bring them back around to about 40 to 50 kids per group. Um, rentals this time, uh, through the month of July, August, September, we had 27, 39, and 21 of our, of our pavilions and rental centers and, uh, stuff that we do. And then leisure lifestyles, uh, between July, August, and September, had 1,610 in our LLO in July, August 2052, and then September 1612.
That's awesome.
With those numbers. And those, obviously, the, the July, the July-August numbers kind of, um, come in. July was hit a little bit on the aquatic side, we're being down a couple weeks with, with some issues we had there. Um, but that's the, the big spike in August there was the, was some aquatics coming back in place. Uh, independent contractor programs that I kind of want to highlight here, Barton Outdoors Fishing Camps, that's, uh, Aaron Barton does some outdoor stuff for us. Uh, this past summer, it's a, it's a, it's a four-day camp that he kind of puts things together, and there was 39 different kids coming to that camp this week that goes fishing or goes, um, he has some add-ons that's actually through his own private business that they want to do, but as far as the fishing camps through us, he had 39, but they can do some other things there. Uh, one of the newest classes that, that we have, we have Becca Chapman, uh, who comes in and does a Foundations of Dog Obedience, and that's been really well received. First, first section had 14, he had 14 families of 14 dogs, uh, come through the class to do the obedience class, and then the second semester, which is going on right now of it, um, we've got 12 going in there. Aqua Cardio Power, because of the pool, we had some other independent contractors that wanted to come in, um, and do more of a, more than just a general, um, exercise class. And through those months, we had 18 paid, 13 paid, and 13 paid for these three months there. One of the biggest classes, the new ones that we've come through, is a power tumbling, um, that we've added in, uh, to use our gymnastics room and our old gymnastics room. And in August, we had 25 kids, and in September, 23 kids. So those are big, big new programs on the independent contractor side, uh, that did that. Uh, we've reached over 11,000 contacts in our newsletter system now, so every week, obviously, we send out 11,000 emails to comp, to, uh, people in the community that can see what all we've got going on. Um, and I will, uh, just highlight a little bit on the pool, and I'll have y'all a full report, obviously, in the year, um, coming in. But the most popular thing that was sold at the pool this summer was candy bars, 3,227 of them.
Wow.
So, uh, we do have some really good numbers, if y'all remember before the year started, I told you we would have a better accounting system, uh, to be able to tell y'all better days, better things for that. Um, and through people, and we've still got to check some stuff through our square, um, but we believe somewhere around 37,402 people that walked into the pool, um, this summer.
Wow.
Um, and I'll, I will confirm those numbers-
That's awesome.
-but it's going to be somewhere around that number.
That's awesome.
Anything else I'm willing to chat about, but I just wanted to highlight?
It looks great, exciting. Thank you for all the hard work that goes into that. Please thank, thank your staff for it.
I'll do it, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Seth. All right, Rusty, request permission to approve a parade assembly permit for community church to host a Christmas Eve celebration on December the 4th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. They've done this for several years in a row now.
Yes ma'am.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thanks, great job, Rusty. Request approval of a preliminary and final plat for case 3285, Patterson Place subdivision for property located at 3851 Finnwick Road, PPIN 15716. Robert?
Uh, so the subject property is almost 19-acre parcel, stretches from Pat Patterson to Anchorage Road, and it's due south of Western Hill subdivision. Advocate was proposed for 146-unit RCID at the November Planning Commission meeting, and advocate is currently proposing a single lot subdivision through property. Uh, the proposed lot meets the dimensional requirements for both the NR and SR zones, and all of the elements of the review are addressed with the site plan from Patterson Place. Engineering provided comments related to access, water and sewer, and some water management with the staff report. In this case, was recommended for approval on the consent agenda at the November meeting of the planning commission with six conditions in the staff report, and staff and the planning commission recommend approval of preliminary and final plat for Patterson Place subdivision with six conditions in your memo.
You've got six conditions there in your report. Anybody have any questions?
I mean, we approve.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We've got to get Robert out of here so he can go make some chocolate pies for City Hall Thanksgiving tomorrow. Um, he makes the best fudge pie that has like ever been eaten. I'm already thinking about it. All right, um, no pressure, Robert. In the minute, so. That's right. Um, all right, first reading of an ordinance, case 3291, modifying Articles 3, 5, and 9 of the land development case.
Good evening. Proposing, uh, three relatively minor changes. Uh, we did meet with the ordinance review committee, and we discussed these. First change of our proposal, we've been seeing, um, residential properties, people that are requesting gates, particularly at the rear of the property across their driveway, um, they want to have a gate, you know, they want to drive back to their carport that might be at the back, but they want to have a security area for their dog. Um, and so, right now, our ordinance requires them to go before, before the planning commission and seek a special exception. We're proposing to have that via staff level approval to ensure that they meet all of the requirements that are in there, and in particular, ensure that, um, it depends on the house and the location. We want to make sure that they're not creating a safety issue from a traffic standpoint in blocking the road. So in the instance where the gate would be in the side or the rear of that, uh, the property, behind the front of the house, we would just approve that administratively.
Go ahead.
So pretty, pretty simple change there. Um, any questions on that one?
All right, so that's just a first reading, that our next meeting will have a second-
I've got two more, two more quick ones.
A second reading is, oh, okay.
Yep, just two, two additional, uh, changes in Article 5. We're proposing, um, we have seen some developments where they're introducing the same building over and over again, and, um, it's not all the time, but in, in several developments we've seen this. So, um, we're grafting some language in here similar to what we have in the Pat Patterson overlay that we, we created, where, um, a development shall have, uh, varied buildings and not the same design next to each, you know, next to each other. So it could be different roofs, different materials of the building, shape of the footprint, it could be, uh, we're just seeking some variety in our buildings or being constructed in these developments. And then lastly, a modification for the applicability of site plans. Uh, when there is a removal or, and replacement of 50% of a facade of an existing building for the purposes of commercial or mixed uses, then they would have to go through a, a site plan. We don't see this that often, but sometimes we do with a, an adaptive reuse of a building, um, maybe like, um, uh, I guess over here at the Guthrie's, sorry, I wanted to say Abner's, but Guthrie's is the, uh, the Guthrie's buildings where they reuse that. So this would make them go through a full site plan review and comply with all of the requirements of the site.
Okay, so all three of those changes, that's the first reading. Does anybody have any questions for Ben? If not, then we'll hear those as second reading and public hearing, internee. Thank you, Ben. All right, request for approval of a preliminary plat for case 3283, Oxford Commons LLC, David Blackburn, for the Heights, Phase 6, for property located at Devonshire Drive, PPIN 37696. Robert?
All right, so this will be for the next 15 lots at Heights. Um, subject property is about two and a half acres off Devonshire Drive, um, west of empty buddy east and south of Oxford High School. Lots meet the dimensional standards of the project, and the planning commission recommended approval as part of the consent agenda in November. And so, staff and planning commission recommend approval of preliminary plat, or the, yeah, preliminary, yeah, plat for the Heights, Phase 6, with the seven conditions that are in the memo.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, sir. All right, consider bids for the FY 26, Oxford Police Department vehicle uplift. Mark?
So we received two bids from qualified companies for the upfitting of the eight Dodge, new Dodge Chargers. The low bid was from Emergency Equipment Professionals for $177,144. Um, we recommend acceptance of the bid and also authorization to allow the mayor to sign the contract, which was included in part of the bid documents. Um, the work will be substantially completed no later than three, five days after notice received.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Consider contract for the playground, ground equipment at A B Park.
So, you also, the board selected the Planet Recast submission out of several, um, companies that submitted for the new playground designs, and that was based on a recommendation by OPC, um, a design team that they had put together. That happened back in September. Uh, based on that initial proposal and design, it was kind of a conceptual design, a few staff members and folks met with Planet Recast, and we finalized some minor details, and we developed a conceptual design into a final design. Um, so tonight, we're just requesting authorization of the contract, um, based on the final playground design, which is included in Appendix B. Uh, the total project cost is $500,000, and that's included in OPC's budget. Uh, our plant's to begin construction in December, and depending on weather, have the park back open, um, by mid to late March.
Wonderful.
There's some nice renderings in the packet, too.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Public hearing regarding public use of city property policy and consider resolution of the same.
So in October, it's the October work session, y'all looked at the initial draft of the city property use guidelines, um, and it's stated in the resolution, which is before you, um, the purpose of the policy is to balance the open access with the necessary limitations to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of all citizens. This policy, policy defines four areas of access, full access, limited access, restricted access, and no access. access, and no access. Um, most of what is being proposed, particularly in relation to restricted access and no access is already in practice. Um, this resolution just formalizes the policy. Um, I'm happy to, I can read the resolution if you, you want me to read it or...
I don't think that's necessary and...
Okay, um, and then...
We've all got it and had it, so...
Is there any comments?
From the board? If not, is this a public hearing? Is there anyone here that would like to make comment on this public use of city property policy? All right, hearing none?
So I'm asking for the, uh, acceptance of the resolution and the, uh, adoption of the policy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Thank you. Consider change order number five from J P Corp. for the City of Oxford Pool Improvements Project.
This is credit for fifteen thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. We reconcile some allowances and late additions and, um, this should be the last change order so we get the money back.
So moved.
Praise the Lord. Um, all in favor? Uh, any opposed?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Consider the request to approve the low bid for the Highway three fourteen, Gus Booker Road Sewer Extension Project. John?
Uh, yeah, Gus Booker Road is, runs north off Highway three fourteen. It's in an annexed area, um, one of the many areas we're trying to get sewer to. Uh, so we recommend the low bid be accepted and we get starter on this.
The low bid's three hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Consider the request to select the date of the proposed Piggy's Road Extension Project public hearing. John?
Uh, so M dot has requested, um, that we hold a public hearing on the Piggy's Road Extension Project, which will connect Piggy's Road to Commonwealth Boulevard in the Oxford Commons. And, um, it will require some major intersection improvements in Highway three thirty-four and University Avenue as well as Piggy's Road, uh, couple of roundabouts as, as you go north. Um, so they have requested that we go ahead and, and hold that to kind of keep with our timeline, uh, which is to try to have a project ready to bid next fall. Um, so what we're asking, they've asked us, we have to advertise for two weeks. So they've asked us, uh, for a date, either the week of December the eighth or December the fifteenth. And we would probably hold that public hearing at the conference center where we can set up maps, pictures, and receive plenty of people.
All right, is there a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
All right, so that will be to propose dates of either December eighth or fifteenth?
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it, we can advertise this Friday and hold it on December the eighth.
Okay.
So I'll just go ahead and say December the eighth.
All right, so that's a motion and a second, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? All right, consider the request from Oxford Farms LLC to release site restoration performance bond two three three six 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 seven for the road extension inside Oxford Farm.
Uh, yeah, so this is the road that's known as the Reserve Loop currently.
It runs south from the roundabout down in Dead Ends currently in, into the reserve.
It's a road that we hope to connect to very shortly, uh, but it's been built for a while, has been inspected. Uh, a warranty bond will remain in place for a year after we release the performance bond.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Consider the resolution for the mayor to sign and execute the contract for the sale and purchase of Landish Road in Oxford, Lafayette County, Mississippi. John?
Yeah, uh, yes, so this is, uh, Landish Road off of Old Taylor, uh, which you have voted to surplus. Um, there's a resolution, uh, from Mayo Mallett in your, your pack. Um, we are asking permission to offer for sale that surplus right away at the price of a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to J W M Development LLC.
All right. We have a motion to move forward with that sale.
Did we talk about a clause about the sidewalk or pathway or something in the...
That, the, the multi-use path along Landish Road will be required as part of their site plan approval for the development.
And they know that.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, any opposed? All right, I'll ask the board now to consider an executive session.
Moving, considering, making a session.
Second. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? The board will now consider an executive session.